That'd be great, yeah.
Well, it is now time for us to have a recitation of Lord's Prayer, followed by a momentary silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Now at seven o'clock, shall we see the house being called order, please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You see it, please? Please, Mr. Crum?
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts? Mr. Cuthbert? Mr. Martin?
Here.
Let's move along here.
And now entertain a motion to dispense of the reading of the Journal from April 21st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts and second by Mr. Martin to dispense of the reading of the Journal from April 21st, 2025. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. Rockland?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah.
And motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. We do have a guest ahead of the seating, but if anyone would like to address the City Council after our initial presentation of our proclamation here to refer, you may come to the podium, stick your name and address, and make your address to council, but we'll wait, we'll have this public presentation first. Please, thank you. So as ladies and gentlemen, you have with us Sherri Brandon, founder, I have that to correct on up here, all paperwork. She is the executive director of the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of Richland County. And May is Mental Health Month in Richland County, and various entities such as commissioners and cities and villages are making proclamations, and we'd like to join in that tonight here in the city of Shelby. The proclamation reads in part, "This year, the Richland County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, in collaboration with Richland Recovery Network Community Partners, proudly celebrates Mental Health Month in Richland County by adopting the national theme, Turn Awareness Into Action." This theme underscores the importance of not only raising awareness about mental health issues, but also taking concrete steps to enhance mental health well-being. Whereas, being able to maintain good mental health is essential to each and every individual's overall health, whereas the behavior health system in Richland County has a broad continuum of care with a variety of services for both mental health and substance use disorders. Whereas, to help people struggling with their mental health, we need to bring awareness to our local mental health system of care, people need to be aware of the services available to them here in Richland County community throughout the Richland Recovery Network, where collaboration meets care. And whereas, Richland County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board and the Richland Recovery Network partnering agencies are standing in support of those we serve, these partners include agencies like Community Action for Capable Youth, Catalyst Life Services, Family Life Counseling, National Alliance of Mental Illness of Richland County, and Urban Minority Alcoholism Drug Abuse Outreach Program, UMINOP. And whereas, Richland Recovery Services Network invites community partnership, including Healing Hearts, Third Street Clinic, Richland County Community Alternative Center, Hope 41933 Forever, Ohio Health Mansfield Psychiatric Services, Richland County Youth and Family Council, Starfish Project, Encompass Counseling, Project One, Brightview, Akron Children's Hospital Behavioral Health Center, and others to join in support of recovery, because people can and do recover from a mental health diagnosis. We call the Richland County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, Richland Recovery Network agencies, safety service staff, politicians, family members, community members, and those who served by the system to do their part and guide the way to brighter days for those in recovery. Now therefore I, Stephen Elshag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Month in Shelby. As Mayor of the City of Shelby, also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Shelby to recommit to the community as a step toward increasing awareness, wellness, and understanding of mental health and addiction. And witness whereof, hereon two, set my hand and cause the city of Shelby to be affixed on this fifth day of May in the year of our Lord 2025. And Sherri is going to say a few words here, but I do want to, Joe, we might want to get a picture of presenting this. We certainly want to join others on your phone. Everybody's phone, it's all about phones. Much commer- people, Sherri, and remember to get a picture of this dress and with your backdrop. You don't mind a photo, do you?
I didn't ask for it.
Yeah, here we go, so, okay. There you go. Very nice. And I believe the Richland County, our Richland County Mental Recovery Services Board has been leading the way for years. I think we've done a kind of example, and we appreciate this, that the one page that's handed out was created again years ago to become a vital tool for law enforcement officers, mental health workers and so forth, and churches and everything, to try to find as many ways as we can to help folks who are having mental health issues and recovering and substance abuses. So, Richland County is a leader, and we thank you for continuing that leadership and providing help for those who need it most. So, I will give you this proclamation to take with you, and Sherri wants to say a few words to our council, please.
Can I go over there?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
So, I have been director at the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board since November of 23. And during that time, I've worked with our community partners to enhance the services that fall within the board's purview. We have brought on Ohio Health and Akron Children's, they both have psychiatric services that we felt were vital to the continuum of care that we had under the board's umbrella. We are a public service organization, and the agencies that we work with receive federal, state, and local dollars. As we began to work in a new direction under my administration, I got to fulfill a, I'll call it a dream, because I think mental health services and substance use services in Richland County, we have, you know, a lot of services that provide care for a lot of people, but I don't think people really grasp the board's role in the services that are delivered under that public system. The Mental Health Board receives federal, state, and levy funds to make sure we have the services that are needed. And in order for people to understand what the board does, and who the board is, and why they are giving us money from, you know, the levy funds that we collect, I pulled together a marketing committee, and that committee, I wanted to design a system that helped people understand our role. And that's when Richland Recovery Network was developed. We are doing a couple really cool things, and the biggest thing that I'm so excited about is we're developing a website. And this website is going to be, for lack of a better way to explain it, like a trickle-down effect. You will go to the website, the first question you will see is, "Are you in crisis?" Yes or no? If you answer yes, it'll populate 911, and it'll populate the crisis helpline with a little definition of what each of those mean. If you answer no, the next question is, "Are you looking for mental health, substance use, prevention, or advocacy?" You'll click that. So if you are looking, we'll say, I'll give you the example of Detox. If you're looking for withdrawal management, you would click on substance use, and then that's going to pull up the services that are available in the county. And you look through the list, you find withdrawal management, you click on that, it's going to tell you the agencies that provide that and give you the contact number for the part of the organization that will work with you to get you through intake and get you into Detox. So it's going to refine our system, and instead of individuals looking at, we have five contract agencies and about 20 affiliate agencies. So imagine you are in the midst of addiction, or mental health, and you want help and you want them out. And you have to look through 25 websites to see, you know, if each of those organizations provide the care that you need. So, developing this website, we are hoping provides opportunity for people to just do three or four clicks and find out, "Oh, I can go to Detox at Catalyst Life Services and New Beginnings," and they have inpatient detox, they have nursing staff, they have all of the services that are needed to get people through that trauma. So, very excited about Richland Recovery Network, the partners that we initially will have on that website are the ones that the mayor mentioned, and then we will gradually bring the other partnerships into that website as well, because we want to ensure that people know all of the services that fall under the board's umbrella. We hope to continue to provide the quality care that we know is being provided in our county. Lots of stuff going on with the biennial budget, and a lot of concern about the loss of Medicaid and another grant that we have that's $1.2 million. So our levy is eligible to go on ballot in November. I've been working with the commissioners, and will approach them to request a renewal, is I believe what we're going to do. I fear doing anything else, but we will put that levy on the ballot hopefully in November with the support of the Richland County Commissioners. And, you know, just pray that the taxpayers continue to support the Mental Health Board so we can continue to stabilize.
Are there any questions, Sherri? Thank you so much, Sherri, and you're doing a great work, you and your team are doing great work, so thank you very much, and we have the citizens of Shelby.
Thank you, thank you. I was supposed to retire in December of 23, and then, you know, here I am. So, I love the board, and I, you know, I love being a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and for the public comment, public comment to make, you can wait in the podium, and save your name and address and make comments.
My name is Daniel McLean, live in Nine River, Aggie, Wisconsin. I have a situation that happened April 4th of 2022. I've been kind of dealing with it since, since through, well, local complaints, the Shelby Police Department, which one's right here, it just happened to say that all of my complaints were unfounded and without merit. However, what the situation was, I got in an altercation with my wife, she was having a mental breakdown, and I offered to leave the, I said I was going to leave the address so that she could remain there and use my truck, even though she just got a job, and me saying I was going to leave had caused her to say she was going to shoot herself, and she went for her locked firearm, which was in the case, which technically she shouldn't even have. The police basically took, she, when I said I was going to leave, she got angry, said she was going to shoot herself, I had to take the gun away from her, and then I went back, sat on the couch, while she walked out the back door, walked down the street, which is on the camera at my house, which Officer Nolan acknowledges that I had a camera, but he never asked for the footage. And then she goes to the police department. Well, Nolan fabricated a false narrative the whole time I was speaking to her, basically charged me for felony three abduction, which there was a probable cause here, upheld by court of course, Shannon Small, which technically court of course had judicial authority, their administration clerical, so therefore that would be an alter virus act, which also makes it all mullaboyed from the beginning type issue. However, I still got, you know, search warrant found arrested, and spent 56 days in jail and 66 days on ankle monitor, all along about $7,000 worth of my tools and $7,000 worth of my firearms, which were missing by the time I came home. I also put out a complaint about my firearms missing, I'm guessing nothing ever got known about that, because I still don't have my firearms, and nobody's ever told me where they ended up. However, in the past, at least in the body cam footage, which I got, and I put on YouTube, it's got 25,000 views now, Officer Nolan and Officer Turner went and handed multiple assault rifles, two handguns, and a shotgun, and 700 rounds of ammunition to her, and loaded them up in the truck for her. Well, she covered domestic violence from 2010 for threatening to shoot me in my ethnic race, which she said was a threat of promise, and it was this police department and this court that actually had charged her with domestic violence. So technically, that would be, you know, federal law, you know, Federal Military Act of 1968, states no custody for domestic violence, allow the owns, has, transfers, sells any firearms or ammunition. Law and Bird Amendment, 1996, the states, they stay invited for domestic violence. They go and give her all firearms, and then they leave her at the address she supposedly was abducted from. So, basically, I got robbed, and then, you know, I had a registered business and got all my tools sewn, and, yeah. So I had a problem with that, and then they came and committed aggravated burglary on my house.
Just, on one point, under the rules of order...
Yep.
You may address a council on any matter on which council action is desired.
Okay, I'm addressing the technicalities of the police department and the courts, because the courts have the tamper with records, because I have a, I have the recording they gave me, and I know what they did, because I've done recording engineering for 15 years, and they recorded the recording, so then, and I can tell that, because when you right-click properties, you can see the date that it was created, and it shows that they created it on January 4th, or January 28th, 2025, which was actually April 27th, 2022. So I got basically tampered with recording by the court, and removing misconduct from the judge, where she shall shut up at me, because I told, I called out Officer Nolan for lying, because he said that I bribed my wife.
Mr. Crum, just to give you this point, just again, what is the action that you are desiring for council?
Oh, 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 but I'm asking them an internal investigation be done upon the Shelby Police Department and the courts for the, for apparently the fraud of the courts and the fabricating of false reports and tampering with evidence. And I have all of it, I kept every single document and every little sentence in it. And trust me, I'm on with it.
Okay, I think council, you understand what the desired action is, and you respond accordingly.
I understand too, the people in the city council are actually ex police officers, so, but, all right. We'll, we'll...
Do we give your, your action that is desired out of deliberation, and see where we go?
I would just like to know where my firearms are, because there's firearms, my name on them out there, and when I made a complaint about it, nothing ever got back to me, and when I made an actual complaint with the police department, they said that that was all unfounded and without merit, and that the ATF actually investigated it already, which I really doubt that's the case, because they have sent a major report to that, we have your court missing firearms, and I guarantee that never happened either.
Okay, I think you understand what you're desiring, and we'll take that into consideration.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any further public comment to make before our council, enter the seat. If not, moving forward to the reports from standing and special committees, Community and Economic Development Committee, Councilman Cuthbert.
Yes, the Community and Economic Development met on May the 2nd, and we didn't talk about it a lot, but I'll run through it real quick. So, first thing is, with the chip, checking to see if it can be more accessible to Shelby residents, possibly maybe putting some flyers or passing off some cards around, just to make it a little easier for people to get a hold of it. The CSE is still working on the Shaw building, they have a meeting in May with the architect and engineer, so we should know a little bit more of the next meeting. The flower watering sign up is going well, they've got a lot of participation on that, but there are still a few days open, so if anybody wants to participate in watering the flowers, that would be a great public community. Because all they have to do is get the golf cart and drive the golf cart around, plant flowers, easy, easy. Still working with the, looking at a county-wide regional planning, but we can't make that happen with cooperation from the county and maybe hang out some other, some other municipalities, we'll just move forward with that. Let's see, there was ribbon cutting, and maybe heard today, I'm sure the mayor was there. Then there was also a ceremony at the Denos site, and probably May, our indie local company was actually doing that work, which is nice, and they made quite a bit of progress on that, I'd like to say, I was a little surprised when I seen that. The last thing is, the county is looking at becoming a port authority. This would add some additional tools for economic development, so there'll be more, I'm sure, to cover that. And that's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Cuthbert, or are there any comments or questions in regard to this report? You already know, and move forward then to public works and general operations committee, Helsman Robb.
I wasn't in attendance at that meeting, I'm going to have to...
And I do not have a report, I apologize.
Right, that's fine, and I'm sure there'll be more to come next month, so thank you, gentlemen.
Very short.
That, it was very short. Forward, sweetie. All right, now come to the reports of city officials, give the mayor's report here. I do have another proclamation, it is that time of year, so this is a proclamation proclaiming May 16th and May 17th, 2025, as poppy days. And the proclamation reads as such, I'll put my glasses on this time. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas American Legion Auxiliary Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans at the Ohio Veterans Home in Sandusky, Ohio, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the auxiliary is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore I, Stephen Elshag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May 16th to May 17th as poppy days, and urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for buddy poppies and the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifice of our honored dead. Now therefore, furthermore, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a buddy poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Together, let us celebrate and promote poppy days. Witness whereof, I hereon two, set my hand and cause the seal of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this fifth day of May in the year of our Lord 2025. So in the upcoming days, May 16th and 17th, our local auxiliary will be offering poppies for donations, and, you know, I urge all of us to have a part in that for all the reasons that were read in this form of proclamation. All right. Moving further into my report. Since our last council meeting, I have been occupied with typical mayorial duties and delights. The Health Department has interviewed a number of candidates for the director of nursing position. We believe we are getting close to the final interview process, and hopefully we'll have a hire soon. On April 24th, I presided over the monthly mayor's staff meeting. On April 25th, we were pleased to host the students from the Pioneer Career and Technology Center on their community service day here in Shelby. Mr. Geis did a great job up and down the streets of doing some deep cleaning around the sidewalks and along the buildings, and made the city look so much better, so thanks to the Pioneer students and Mr. Geis. Also on that 25th, and Mr. Cuthbert was there, the Shelby Shade Tree Commission, of which he is a member, planted a tree in Veterans Park in observance of Arbor Day. And on April 30th, I met with my fellow Richland County mayors in Mansfield for our monthly mayor's luncheon. And as was mentioned, today was truly an historic day in the city of Shelby. This morning, we celebrated the simultaneous grand opening of Minnie's with the built-in Duncan Villains on Mansville Avenue, a rather impressive structure, and it's so cool on the inside, and there's more to come on the inside with their Dino World Adventure, so that's, that's coming later on this year. But there was already a good number of folks, not only at the ribbon cutting and the grand opening, but there are folks that were there getting a firsthand view of all the selections inside the building, so quite, quite a facility. And we do want to thank the Kohl's Group for their investment here in Shelby. And then also, this afternoon, we kicked off the demolition project at Main Broadway, Broadway, rather, as Mr. Cuthbert said. That is a land bank, by and large, a land bank project. Mr. Geis worked very, very hard, Mr. Griffin worked very, very hard to put all the pieces together, a public-private partnership, and so that will be demolished, and green space, shovel-ready green space for further development and investment in the city of Shelby, so that's, that's a great thing, we want to thank everyone involved in that. And so it was welcomed by the media, so I'm sure you can catch more of the detail about those two events there. I think that's the first time we've had two, two events like that, two major events on the same day, so it's truly a red letter day. Cleanup days are coming on May the 16th and the 17th, everyone got a flyer in their mailings. This year, we are not going to be picking up fresh cut, I'm sorry, not fresh yet, fallen limbs, we're not going to pick up fresh cut either, but we're not picking up fallen limbs at curbsides. Everyone will have to be brought out to the service department on State Street and be clearly marked, and we'd be glad to pick those up, but most everything is clearly delineated on the flyer of what we can and cannot do as a health department here in the city of Shelby. And if there is assistance needed for the elderly and disabled, folks can call 419-342-5226, and we'll see if we can give them some help in their cleanup efforts for the elderly and disabled. And we thank all the volunteers that are pitching in on that. And then on May 31st, we're going to have our very first Bee Festival, and it'll be downtown, getting more of the details that are next meeting, but the plans are again to have, I think, three music groups, some food and drink trucks, a lot of things happening around Main Street Amphitheater area, there'll be some things, baked goods contests, honey judging contests, so we'll get more details. Sounds like a great, a great event for a bee city to partake of, that'll be May 31st, so set your calendars. I'm not going to say, be there. I guess you will. I did say it, yeah. All right, I think that's all my report, any comments or questions for me? Mr. Crum, Director of Clients.
Thank you, sir. Well, you know, April 15th came and went, and so that's a big relief for the tax department especially. April collections were down slightly from last year, $1,700 or something. We are still up for the year because January, February costs are all high, so, yeah. We are still up for the, because January, February, October, so, um, yeah, I was a little surprised that we, we weren't a little, little higher in collections during April, but it's all right. In other news, the gap conversion and audit progress is, is coming along. Getting a lot of documents around both of those entities. The software conversion process is, is moving forward as well. Probably start training on the new software, uh, in a few months. We're gonna build live, probably second quarter of, of next year. So that is, that is moving on. We've also started cross-training Matt on the income tax department on PayPal, so that we'll get an extra, extra person in office that knows how to do that, so. That's pretty much all my reports, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Terry, now? Step next to Mr. Gordon Isner, just in the door. Of course, I knew you were, um, I knew that I laid you in here, and, um, so, any report, Mr. Crum?
Perfect timing, thank you, Mayor. Routine business, uh, my office, these are things to discuss, I guess, later at the chat.
All right, Mr. Joe Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, like we mentioned the last meeting, our senior project has been awarded. Uh, you'll notice on Second Street, our Service Department is going to add some drains. To get that done before the payment, yes, we'll have to take it up later, so. There are some areas that have some problems with that, that'll help with the drainage and wear effect, or, uh, we continue getting the engineering done with consolidated storm sewer, that should be coming to council soon. Curtis Drive San Antonio, we also had a meeting with the engineer for the Liberty Road project. A lot of steps from spending federal funds, so, Rick, stage one plans have been submitted to ODOT. There's some comments, we'll come back, and then we'll have to address those, go to stage two, and move on from there, so that is ongoing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any questions for Mr. Geis for your report? All right, Terry, now, we'll move forward to new business, anything new business to grow up for council this evening. Mr. Crum?
Um, it's kind of about the future use of the Main Street Fire Station, but it is new, so to speak. Uh, we did receive from the, uh, mayor, uh, a letter stating that the old fire station, uh, has, uh, has, uh, outlived its use once, and is no longer needed for a municipal purpose. Um, so I'd like to, uh, move this is, uh, received and placed on file to city.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, the second by Mr. Roberts, that the letter dated May second, two thousand twenty-five, in regard to the, uh, old fire station on ten, ten, East Main Street, being received, placed on file, and to the city. And the recent this letter, this is similar in some ways, but, uh, there was a phrase in here that was, uh, requested by the law director, that phrase in the one to the third paragraph about the last full sentence, uh, these other things are no longer needed on exhibit A, but excluding any ingress egress, and so on and so forth there, as shown on exhibit B. Mr. Geis, you might want to explain why we wanted to update the language of, uh, this, this letter to, to make that notation.
Thank you, Mayor. On the previous letter that was written, it basically said that whole parcel had no municipal use, and the meeting with the law director, they actually do have some use because we're keeping part of that parcel. And also, uh, when this is sold, we would like, when council all addresses, when council all addresses at that point, that last section, will we get ingress egress needs met? You have the city, the opportunity to get on there, we do have utilities running through there, and, uh, give us access to that area, so, uh, we can't say no municipal use, but we do have some municipal use, so it's just an alteration to come in there.
Alteration, clarification. Uh, clear? All right, so we will, we will certainly do that, Mr. Martin, I'd like to put that, but this, most reasonable, fine. Quick, uh? Yeah? Carter? Okay. Any other discussion? Just a motion to place on, uh, place, receiving, place on file. Both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brock?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Motion passes. Now we'll take the pattern on that. All right, any other new business? Bring this under, uh, under unfinished business, the future use of the Main Street Fire Station to, there, and, uh, rest of that will come under executive session, please, council, have some conversation in executive session on this point. Any other unfinished business? Smokestack is here, Mr. Hansman and I, Mr. Hansman, primary, have been covered over, so we'll try to, uh, get some traction on that here. Hopefully, I don't really have any, but it's on, it's on the agenda, so, a little way. Any other unfinished business? Let's get the letter section.
Ordinance number nine, two thousand twenty-five. Approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, approving, adopting, and enacting new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances in conflict therewith, declaring emergency.
Will the rule requiring the ordinance to run on three separate occasions be suspended?
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, the second by Mr. Roberts, that the rule requiring the ordinance to run on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Mr. Rob?
Yes, before we, uh, vote to make this an emergency, had all these ordinances been reviewed, by their respective departments, and, uh, verified that, that, uh, the language is correct?
Best of my knowledge, John, you went through yours, right? Mr. Hansman? Oh! You're in the process. Mr. Martin?
Is there a reason we do this by emergency? I know we wanted to get done, this is possible, I, I get that, my, but, uh, is there a reason we don't do it, uh, multiple readings, reasons, and readings, and then do an emergency on the last one, so we'll go back right away?
Mr. Crum asked me to address some of that, on, when we pass some, especially on zoning and so forth, and someone goes to our website, and they're reading old ordinances, and a new version of those ordinances, and I think your head has some basis.
Yeah, I understand why we do it at the last one, so it's an immediate transfer because of the sixty days or not, but, um, I'm just wondering why the, not going through readings before then, I guess, is that? I know the last time we did this, we did it because there was a mistake that needed to be fixed rather quickly on the website, so we went into emergency to do it, but I don't believe reading language, any of these fall into that category of working. Something that needs to be fixed right away.
Mr. Rob?
There appears to be, um, several, um, I, I would guess they, they are, uh, parking ordinances, um, traffic ordinances, and four fifty-two section, is the police chief reviewed those to, uh, to ensure that the language is correct. It's, it, it's happened in the past that, that ordinances have gone into the book, so to speak, um, where the language wasn't exactly the same as what council had approved. I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid that type of situation. One or two words can change the meaning of an ordinance a lot.
I'm not sure specifically what you're referring to, if you're, are you talking about the last set of ordinances under the parking ordinance change?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at this ordinance here, there's a four fifty-two section, four fifty-two oh one, um, and, and on through, there's also, uh, numerous other ordinances, numbered ordinances. If we haven't passed, had the opportunity to review those, to, just to make sure that those are correct.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, if I may, Mayor. Um, why don't we, uh, okay, if it would please everybody involved, I think we, uh, table this motion, and then we, uh, move to postpone this ordinance till next, then you, Mayor, can go to everybody, you just can't sign off that people, if they're comfortable with the language, and they bring that to us, and then we can readdress this next council meeting. I mean, this isn't anything that's gonna be life-shattering in the next two weeks, so, if that would please everybody, I think that's a fair, uh, compromise on this, so I would just, uh, Mayor, make a move to, uh, table this motion, um, and postpone ordinance number nine, two thousand twenty-five, to the next council meeting.
Say. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, the second by Mr. Rob, to table the motion on the table, and then postpone it to the next council meeting. Discussion? Both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brock?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-five. Correcting ordinance for two thousand twenty-five and confirming the vacation of an alley and declaring emergency.
Move that the rule requiring the ordinance to run on three separate occasions, Mr. Smith?
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, the second by Mr. Brockman, that the rule requiring the ordinance to run on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Mr. Martin?
That's the reason for the emergency.
Mr. Geis?
Council has already voted to vacate that alleyway. When it got over to different quarters, and normally, when I, when I receive these, uh, vacation plaques, they've been reviewed by the tax map office. Somehow this one wasn't, it just had wrong lot numbers on it, so substantial, substantial action of council wasn't saying, it's just changing some lot numbers all over it. So, to be, it's already went past, it's pretty basic and everything before, so.
Mr. Martin?
That's perfectly fine justification, actually, I'd make sure you appreciate it.
Further discussion? Both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brockman?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, and the second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-five, discussion?
It was pretty well explained.
It was very well explained, that's all right, man. All right, both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brockman?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number eleven, two thousand twenty-five. Declaring a nineteen eighty-seven Winco diesel generator with trailer used by the Shelby Fire Department as unneeded, authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Safety to sell the unneeded property on Internet caution.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, the second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of Resolution number eleven, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Martin?
Actually, I have a procedural discussion, uh, Mayor. So it does say that the, uh, the, the diesel generator is no longer needed for municipal use in the legislation, um, but I'm wondering if that needs to be accompanied by something from you as the Director of Public Safety stating that.
I stated it by email to party involved, but, um, probably would be cleaner, or do you, what do you think?
I don't think we need it, I think the person in charge of it has an order to get rid of it, and so it's a thousand bucks, it has to be sold, it's auctioned. Council approves, we're good to go.
And again, it, it hasn't stated, uh, in, in my public record, if you look at that email, that I said that she onlooked with, with a party with this generator, too.
Mr. Martin? The law director's explanation is good enough.
Further discussion? Both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brockman?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Resolution number eleven, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number twelve, two thousand twenty-five. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to participate in the Sourcewell Woburn purchasing plan for the purchase of an E eight eight R two series Bobcat compact excavator with accessories, with the Service Department declaring emergency.
Second. Who, who seconded that? Mr. Cullip?
Yes, Mr. Cullip.
It sounded like a tie, eh, okay, yeah, Mr. Cullip. So a motion there by Mr. Roberts, the second by Mr. Cullip, for the passage of Resolution number twelve, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? If you'll remember the appropriations meeting, and we felt that, uh, time is always of the essence, I'm gonna get to sit and feel and get to work in here, whenever the weather dry. Uh, both of these?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Brockman?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullip?
Yay.
Resolution number twelve, two thousand twenty-five. Declaring the intent to vacate an alley run perpendicular to West Main Street and from lot spot seventy-eight, five seven five, twenty-seven, five seven six in the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, and the second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of Resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Rob?
How is this gonna affect the business on Gamble Street, whose access to the, uh, his parking lot is through the alley?
Mr. Geis? So the only alley we're talking about is the alley that sits right next to Webbers, it's in between there, it does not go back to the alley, it comes off the, well, it stops there, so that alley is still gonna be open.
To what point? I guess I'm a little computer's carry.
Right up to the alley. Maybe you could help if you showed off the alley?
So, just up, just up to the rear of Webbers?
Uh, passing. So we're from right here to right here.
So on the, on the map thing we have, it goes all the way through, but it's just this cross-section that's actually vacating, it stops right there.
No, it's, it's from here to here.
But, no, I'm talking about the sheet that we have.
Put a label on here to here.
Yeah. So this is Main Street right here, okay? And then this is the alleyway that comes off of Gamble and comes off the lot.
Okay, all right. Oh, this, this is, this is one we, we discussed before.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I was a little confused there, because I was thinking it was the east and west alley, and not north and south, but, I'm sorry. I guess it's pointed out right here, though.
No, towards the main street.
Never mind.
It's strange. Seems like a good question.
Oh, it's really, yeah, Mr. Martin?
So if I'm looking, I'm looking at this sheet here, the, with the alley, right? So this is, this is that point north that you were looking at, right?
Right.
And then this is the point, Main Street. This indicates that only this section is where we're vacating. Who owns these two sections right here?
So, normally on an alleyway, okay, like this section right here, this would be the Sixth Water Street here?
Yep.
So normally, half of this would go to them. You have letters in here from both of them, here, this, and this property owner stating that they do not want any of the alleyway. So, this property owner, this, these are all the same property owner on this side of the alleyway? So all of the alleyway would refer to this, uh, the alleyway, so all of the alleyway would revert to this, uh, the west property owner.
Oh, okay, I see over here, I missed them, okay, got it. That makes sense, okay. So they're being, they're being reverted to them from other people, that's why there's three separate sections, okay.
Right.
I am, I'm, I am tracking now, thank you.
So I, I see that these current property owners don't have a problem with those, that they don't have any use for it, but who's to say that in the future, property owners might need access to that? I would just say the previous time this alley was to be vacated, um, there's been some discussions with the property owners about, I think, after this comes back from the board revision, you might see a lot of different things than it was before, access easements and things like that, which would be signed on the deed and recorded, so they would always have access. With the, and with the addition of our safety force would mean they have access to that. Mr. Cullum? That, that makes me feel better about that, about where we go, because, you know, who's to say down the road that somebody doesn't need to get back there for some reason. So once this happens, then the person that's receiving the alley will be responsible for all the maintenance and the people set out, correct?
All right, this is the intent to vacate legislation since Dr. Paul. Any other discussion? Good questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Blockman?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cullum?
Yea.
Resolution number thirteen, two thousand twenty-five, passes. At some time for miscellaneous business, miscellaneous business to draw up for council? Mr. Martin?
Well, before the next time we meet, Mother's Day will come on, so may I say, happy very early Mother's Day to all the mothers out. I move that council go into executive session for the following purpose, considering the purchase of property, both real and personal, tangible or intangible, or considering the sale of property, either real or personal, by competitive bid. Disclosure of the information would give a competitive advantage to the other side by division. G two, section one point of one point two two of the revised code.
Say. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to go into executive session for the reasons so read. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Oh.
Are you in discussion?
Yeah, uh, if council chooses to pass this, we would ask that Mayor, Law Director, and Mr. Geis join us.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Blockman?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cullum?
Yea.
Motion passes, we go into executive session at seven fifty-three.